Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the June 22 meeting of the Sagatuck City Council to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Sorry, Becken?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Peterson? Verplank?
Here.
Truster?
Here. Council members all present. First item is approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 8, 2020. Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris.
Chris?
I move that we approve minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 8, 2020, as presented.
Second, this is Garnet.
Thank you. Moved by Peterson, second by Lewis to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none will take a vote. It'll be a roll call, please.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
And Truster?
Yes. So the minutes of the June 8, 2020 meeting are approved. I'll skip the mayor's comments for now. City manager comments?
The city took delivery of the new 2020 GMC truck that is used for the parks. We took possession of that last week. The city will be selling the 2009 truck per the bidding process. The contractor has finished the flood mitigation work at Lucy and Water Street, and the pumps are installed and working. The area is now dry. The DPW will be performing some cleanup in the area soon. The Hesco barriers and pump system is complete at the end of Butler Street and is working well. The Hesco barriers have been installed at the boat ramp at Spear Street, and the DPW is still fine tuning some things in that location. Generally speaking, the flood mitigation work has been very successful, as long as the water levels do not get much higher and that we don't have any major storm events. Everything should hold and function properly. So if you get a chance, you can drive down at least to the water Lucy Street location. It's not the prettiest site right now, but it's definitely dry, and that was one of the goals. So that, right now, is looking like a very successful project. The City Hall phone system conversion has been completed. We are now using a web-based communication system at City Hall that is more efficient and allows callers to be connected directly to the person or department they are trying to reach without the need for a general receptionist-type activity. The system also allows callers to be directed to other agencies without interruption of City Hall work duties. This new system allows City Hall staff to be more efficient in communicating with the public as voicemails are emailed as text files and voice files to their cell phones when they are working but not necessarily in the office. For example, we have such a small staff that we have staff members that will have to go to the bank or to the post office or go to training. So this way, when someone's actually working but not necessarily in the office, they could be on-site, the citizens can get access to the people they need to get access to. So that's a big improvement. The new system also provides a more independent user features that allows the employees to be directly in control and maintain their individual features when working remotely. In all cases, the effectiveness of servicing the city's customers when they call City Hall is maintained and oftentimes improved. So we just got the system installed last Friday, and we're going through and learning it, but right now it's working really well. So the other nice thing about this system is if and when we have to do any type of remote work, this will streamline us and allow us to still continue and maintain communications with the public and continue to work. So that'll be a, we're trying to be proactive in that measure. The Oval Beach Boardwalk structure will be installed this week as well. You may have received some comments or concerns from your constituents regarding that, so we'll get that put into place. Also, I'm sure you're aware, the Michigan's governor has extended the use of remote public meetings for governmental entities until the end of July. The city of Sagatuck will continue to use the Zoom meeting platform for regular public meetings until that time. I've been working closely with the interim city clerk Cindy Osmond, making sure that all the election matters are being handled appropriately, and I'm going to turn it over to her real quickly. She can just give you a real quick update on some of the things that she's working on so that the councils understands that everything's being handled appropriately with those activities.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything's going quite smoothly. We have Jeannie Neve coming into the office at least once a week to help process the absentee ballot applications, and she is the retired city clerk from Douglas, so she's very familiar with how the elections work and how they run. I did do a training this morning, this afternoon, at Manley's Township with the county clerk, and although there's a lot to do, I am confident that we can handle it. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other item.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, I wanted to bring this up under mayor's, or I'm sorry, under city manager's comments, so that maybe council can kind of think about it, and maybe we get to council comments, we can have some discussion. But I was contacted by Mike Johnson, who is the owner of Coral Gables, and he was interested in providing, you know, raising the funds. He thinks he can come up with the amount of money needed to hire the company that would normally do the fireworks over the Venetian weekend. And of course, he would need to get permission from the city of Douglas as well as the city of Sagatuck. And he was wondering before he would go through that process and contract with the individual and get the necessary permits, if council would be, if that's something that you'd consider approving. I said I can't get a vote on tonight's meeting, but maybe you can think about that throughout the meeting, and maybe when we get to council comments, if members have any concerns or anything, at least I can relay them to Mr. Johnson, and he can try to make an informed decision.
Yeah, thanks, Kirk. As a matter of fact, I spoke with a couple individuals in the community about this today, and I'll join in our comments at the end of this thing. I think it's something we should discuss. In full recognition that we got to be very careful, of course, with public health. So maybe we can come back to that later on.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any agenda changes to be proposed? Hearing none, let's move to our guest speakers. I don't see Claire Ray on the screen. Claire, are you here? Maybe not. And I don't, I feel informed enough to brief you on what Claire was going to talk about, so we're going to have to defer that. Maybe you'll be on later. Brett Ennsfield, are you on?
Mr. Mayor, Lieutenant Ennsfield is working on another project right now, so he will not be able to comment this evening.
Okay. Then we'll move to public comment on agenda items only. If you wish to make a comment, please call my attention to you by waving or pressing the raise hand button. And if you wish to make a comment, please limit it to three minutes. Dan Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. This is regarding the flag display measure, really about the conduct of the city council as that measure was considered. I personally know every one of you, some, of course, better than others, but certainly well enough to know that none of you harbors any prejudice or any animosity toward any element of this community, any population within the community. And quite frankly, that's my sense of the larger Sagatuck community. In my eight years living here, I can state unequivocally that I have never heard a biased, or nasty, or inconsiderate word uttered about the gay community. Never. Believe me, that was not the case over my many years in Chicago. So I know what those ugly comments can sound like. Anyway, what distressed me most about last weeks and the last few weeks, and last Thursday's council workshop meeting in particular, was the distinct sense that some on the council were trying to create a rift, trying to inflame some kind of gay Sagatuck versus straight Sagatuck antipathy where none exists. Whatever the reason, maybe looking for a bogus political wedge issue, I don't know. The tactic is as unsavory as it is hurtful, implying that any council member is prejudiced against the gay community is dishonest. This is the most inclusive, diverse, accepting city any of us have probably ever lived in. To intentionally sow divisiveness in this city is just despicable. I for one hope we've seen the absolute end of it. Sagatuck is so much better than this, and I hope you are all too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other in the audience wishing to make a comment? Lauren Flanagan?
Unmuting here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I beg to differ with the prior gentleman's comments. We're all watching. I'm not saying anybody is anti-gay or whatever, but this process has been ridiculous, unnecessary, and I think that, you know, people have been accused of lying when they weren't. And I just want to say, we have seen the video. There are lots of us watching. You have more people on the last few councils than you've had in a while. We are watching. We are going to hold you accountable. And I understand there's rules of procedure, there's Robert's Rules. I'm on multiple boards. I've invested in forty-some companies. I'm a pro at this. I'm like sick of the old man, mansplaining, right? Old white men mansplaining. Here's the deal. We have a pandemic. People are literally dying. Thanks to our governor and her actions, that's on the wane in terms of Michigan, but our small businesses are struggling to survive. We have high water levels, and projected in July to be serious flood that can put many out of business for good. There are some businesses, because we're going to be facing this pandemic through 2021, they're not going to survive. We are going to have serious revenue shortfalls in terms of tax returns and millage and receipts. This is going to be a crisis, and this is the time to lead with vision and not reaction. So I just want you to know, again, we are watching. There are groups of us that are not going to put up with this. You either get your act together and start representing the people of this community, or we are going to get people in who will. And Barry Johnson, I'm talking to you, and some of the others here, this behavior-
Excuse me, Lauren. We will not have a tax on individual council members.
You're making a tax on council members, and I'm defending them, because I know Garnet Lewis and Holly Leo are two of the highest quality people I know, of high integrity. They are not trying to sow division. They're trying to do the right thing. And so I just want to say again, we are watching. We are not going to be passive. Checkbooks are going to be open. People are going to take, and you should, you know, you may say, who's Lauren? I am a world-class strategist who's on the boards of many companies, and I am listening. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? Okay, hearing none. Let's move to, before we move to request approval of accounts payable, is Claire Ray still here by any chance?
I think there's a couple hands popped up, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I saw Todd Hoskins. Yes, go ahead, Todd. And Glenn, next.
I would like to applaud the city council for the quick turnaround, the decision that was made, and the outcome actually matters. The process matters too, but I want to applaud the outcome, and I thank you for representing how our community overall truly stands, and I just want to express my appreciation.
Thank you. Sorry, I don't see the hand up anymore.
Glenn.
Glenn, was that, yeah, there you are, Glenn. I'm sorry. Go ahead, please. You're still muted.
There we go.
This is Marcia Casper, Sagatuck resident.
Hi, Marcia.
Hi. Yeah, I'm actually, I have a comment regarding the ordinance 20062-1, the code for the city of Sagatuck that's on the agenda. And I just wanted to say, and I am a member of the Planning Commission, that from the workshop last week, I just wanted to reiterate that I support Chris Peterson's proposal that no professional offices be allowed in the Water Street North and Water Street South. The Planning Commission unanimously didn't want that in any of the zones. However, you know, I think it is reasonable for the Water Street East in terms of offered are permitted as a special land use. I just wanted to make a few reasons. And one, it was brought up last week that perhaps the Mill Pond on Lake Street, that that set precedent. I don't believe one erroneous decision made over ten years ago establishes precedent, and Mill Pond would still be in business as a non-conforming use if this were to occur. And also, the rationale to allow more flexibility so businesses can, you know, help pay property taxes, in my mind, is not a reason to totally flex the planning and zoning. That's the planning and zoning commissions. I mean, those decisions are made all the time. And, I mean, there are residents who, you know, have been hurt by COVID-19 and other economic reasons, you know, either through their 401Ks, IRAs, they've lost their jobs, and to give this special, you know, benefit to the businesses, I just don't think is a good reason. The other thing is, we have not seen, I have not seen the business financials. Maybe I could have a little bit more sympathy if there was some open book management there. There's always some tension between planning and zoning and businesses, but that's just the nature of the role of the planning commissions, you know, and looking at the long-term view for the community, which also gets to my comment from the workshop around taking a new look at the master plan. The current master plan is, was established in 2016, and so this is a time, I think, that you could look at. Do we want to have shared professional offices? And it was also brought up that, you know, like, that's the wave of the future, while that's a visioning thing that could happen during a master plan session. And the other thing is, you're sort of picking winners and losers if you don't take into account all stakeholders in a visioning session. That may help restaurants by having more professional offices, but it may hurt, you know, the retail space. So I wouldn't want to make a rash decision regarding changing, you know, Sagatuck from being, you know, a tourism town because of, you know, the recent COVID events. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcia. Anyone else wish to make a comment? I see no one. Kirk?
Ken?
We're okay?
Ken, can you hear me?
Yes. Oh, Mark?
Yeah.
Who, Mark, is that you?
Can you hear me, Ken?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know if you can hear me.
I, yeah, I can hear you, Mark, but I can't see you, so I didn't know you were one of the-
Okay. Don't need my picture. Mark Klungel, 747 Water Street, Mill Pond Realty. I'd like to make a comment on the changing of the ordinance, number 13E on the agenda.
Okay.
I would like to speak up against it. This is just more restrictions on the property owners and the businesses trying to make a living in this town. Why stop offices or other professional buildings from competing in this environment? I mean, we've got a lot of empty buildings now. You know, business owners have been forced to shut down for months. Many of them won't come back. You know, our government shut them down. Now many of those owners have an opportunity to open back up, and they can't open up because they can't get employees because their government is paying their ex-employees more to stay home than to come back to work. So it's very hard on businesses to be that. And now we're talking about more change and to make more restrictions on the town we are in, the real estate business here. We spent last year trying to change this ordinance to only allow only commercial on first floor, and that went back and forth for a year, and that finally died, thank goodness. Why do we have to keep changing the rules? You know, a lot of us have money invested in real estate in this town, and, you know, we bought them under the rules that existed at that time, and changing the rules just harms those property owners and, you know, reduces the value of those properties because it makes it harder to rent for those other property owners or harder to use. So I'm asking that you vote down the change in the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. I see Myrene Koch is here, and I'll put her on, unless there's another speaker who wishes to speak on agenda items. Okay, seeing none, I give the floor to County Prosecutor candidate Myrene Koch. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I am Myrene Cook. It's spelled kind of funny, but it's Cook. I am the current prosecuting attorney, and I've been in office for two years. I just wanted to talk with you a little bit, very quickly, about what's been going on in our office. So throughout the COVID pandemic, I felt it was very important as the chief law enforcement officer of the county to be present. So I have been present in the office every day, trying to assist citizens when they call in, trying to assist law enforcement to be able to interpret and understand the ever-changing executive orders that we've received from the governor's office. Unfortunately, at times, some of those have replaced subsequent ones and so on and so on. And so what you thought might have been the one number that applied to whatever situation you were looking at, oftentimes was replaced by a later one. So I felt it was important to try to do that. I sent summaries to law enforcement officers and agencies. I sent summaries to townships and councils and cities and villages, trying to help everyone understand what was going on. Throughout all of that, I think Alleghen County has done a good job. I know it was difficult and hard for many, many people who just wanted to earn a living and support their family. Although there could have been charges for violations and tickets written for those things, the leaders of all of the law enforcement agencies throughout the county, and I sat down and discussed this early on, and we decided to be able to give people warnings first to make sure that they understood exactly what the rules were. And we were happy to say that everyone pretty much understood, once we gave the warning, that they complied with the rules the best that they could. Our office has done some really great things over the last few years, and I just want to share a couple things with you, one of which was we were able to secure a canine advocate. Joey is a yellow lab that came to us, trained from Leader Dogs for the Blind. He comes with approximately $40,000 worth of training to be able to assist victims when they have to testify. I was able to get a grant, not only for Joey, but also his training and his upkeep, if you will, his grooming and vet bills. All of that has been paid for at no expense to the county. It is, however, a great benefit to the victims when they have to testify, particularly the young children. I have been fiscally responsible throughout my time in office. I have been under budget the last two years and am projected for 2020 to be the same, under budget. I was also elected to the Prosecuting Attorneys Association of Michigan, and I was very pleased by that because I was elected by my eighty-two counterparts in other counties. And what that does is it gives Alleghen County a voice at the state level for a county our size to actually have a voice. I am not out of the office by doing that very often. I think we have one to two meetings a year. We have to attend in person. The others, we can attend via electronic means, like we are using tonight. I was also elected by the leaders of law enforcement in our county, the sheriff, MSP, and all of the smaller agency chiefs, as their chief for the law enforcement council for not one but two years. That is something that I feel very honored to have received because it says that I've earned the respect of the law enforcement in our community, and I think that's vitally important as the prosecuting attorney. I would love to say that crime in our county has gone down, unfortunately, although a few things have. Our biggest offender, if you will, is still methamphetamine. We utilize specialty courts when they apply. We utilize diversion programs for first-time offenders, but meth addiction is a very powerful thing that can ruin individuals and families, and we really need to take a hard stand on those cases, and that's something that I've done while in office. I am running for reelection in August, and for those of you who don't know me as well, I've been with the prosecutor's office here for eighteen years and worked hard to work my way up through the ranks, knowing all of the law enforcement members, knowing the community members and the professionals that we work with on a daily basis, I think has been vitally important to handling our office very well. I am married for twenty-seven years and have four children. We reside in the Alleghen area, and I would look forward to any support if you're willing to lend that for this election. It will be an August primary. There is no Democrat running in the prosecutor race. I would be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any, if that's allowed.
Yes, thank you, Myrene. Does anyone have questions? I hear none. Thank you. Appreciate your being with us tonight, and wish you best of luck in the election.
Thank you. And I would also just leave this out there, that if anyone has any questions with regard to executive orders or anything else coming from the prosecutor's office, I am very easy to reach in the courthouse and in the county building. So please feel free to reach out if you do have any questions at any point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item is approval of accounts payable. Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet.
Garnet.
Move to approve accounts payable in the amount of $97,046.2.
Your second?
Second.
Moved by Lewis, second by Peterson to approve accounts payable. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none will take the vote. Clerk, would you read the roll?
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Accounts payable approved. There are no ordinances to introduce, so we'll move now to a public hearing with regard to the 2021 budget. I would call a public, excuse me, I recall this public hearing to order, and I would accept public comment regarding the proposed 2020, 2021 budget. Will entertain any public comment about the budget, proposed budget? Yes. There we go. Stephanie, velocity?
Thank you. I took the time today to read all hundred and two pages of the packet for tonight's meeting, and a few sections stood out as worthy of recognition. At the bottom of page thirteen is a paragraph written by Kirk, and it states, "The city of Sagatuck has operated conservatively, and past budgets and audits support this statement. The city has planned and spent very wisely and strategically." The city has planned and spent very wisely and strategically in past fiscal years due to an experienced and knowledgeable city council. The council has always sought the advice of the city's experienced professional staff as well as professional engineers and financial experts when developing spending policy. The city has maintained reserves that I am confident will allow it to weather the storm ahead and still allow the city to move forward in a very optimistic direction." And then on page eighteen, it also states that the city maintains a double A standard and poorest credit rating, which is the highest rating available for municipality the size of Sawtooth Tech. So for most of our residents, these truths will go unknown. They can just simply enjoy the fruits of a group of people who have shown up, meeting after meeting, some for many years, and done the very unsexy work of crunching numbers and talking through best options. Council stability has given us the luxury of long-serving members bringing the history of a subject to bear on current deliberations, something that greatly enhances understanding and also enhances the newer members of the community like myself. I have attended ninety-nine percent of all council workshops and regular meetings since last June. I've watched how council has worked through every issue Kirk has brought to them. I have watched Kirk demonstrate a broad knowledge base on everything from DNR-related water and dune issues to grant writing to complex financial issues and many more. For such a small town, the knowledge requirements to manage the city well are quite high. This goes for council as well. But each time over the last year, I have watched them rise to the occasion and with Kirk's exemplary city management, work their way through even such current issues that we're facing, such as the record-breaking flooding and the pandemic virus mitigation. Because you have held firm to the principle of fiscal discipline and good stewardship of tax dollars, even when there was a surplus that could have been spent, we now can have a measure of peace. As we wait to see the fiscal effects of the lockdown, this dedication to principle is yielding much-needed fiscal stability. As a resident, I would like to thank Kirk and you council for your obvious love of the city and the years-long commitment to keeping our well-governed. Good governance is never a guarantee in any municipality and it does not happen by accident. So thank you for your faithfulness to our community.
Thank you for your comments, Stephanie. Appreciate that. Anyone else wish to make a comment with regard to the budget? I see no volunteers, so we will move to close the public comment portion and move to council comments. Council, anyone wishing to make a comment with regard to the budget? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing at this time. There's no unfinished business and moving to new business. The first item is amendment to proclamation two one zero five two six dash P one, display flag at pride flag at City Hall, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a motion to amend the, I gotta get a bigger screen here. There we go. I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to proclamation number two zero zero five two six dash P one is presented to display the pride flag at Sawtooth Tech City Hall from June first through June thirtieth in acknowledgement of the LGBTQ pride month and to celebrate the diversity and inclusion. And I would like the amendment to read as follows, so that everybody knows what they're voting on. I think I'll read the whole and show you where I'd like to amend it. Just be the city of Sawtooth, County of Allegan, State of Michigan, proclamation number two zero zero five two six dash P one. The mayor's proclamation, proclamation designating June as pride month. Whereas the city of Sawtooth Tech supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas all people, regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas in support of the city's commitment, the Sawtooth, the city of Sawtooth Non-Discrimination Ordinance was approved by the city council on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven. And whereas the city of Sawtooth accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. Whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, transgender and queer LGBTQ communities contribute to the cultural, civic and economic success of the city of Sawtooth Tech. And whereas while we as a society at large are slowly embracing embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness reminds vital to end discrimination and prejudice. Now therefore be it resolved, Mayor Ken Truster and the members of the Sawtooth City Council hereby proclaim June, and here's an edit, strike out twenty twenty, as pride month in the city of Sawtooth Tech, Michigan and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQ community face and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. And I'd like to insert, be it finally resolved, that the city of Sawtooth Tech will display the pride flag at Sawtooth City Hall from June first through June thirtieth, an acknowledgement of the LGBTQ pride month and to celebrate diversity and inclusion.
Jane? You're muted, Jane.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I wish to second that motion.
Moved by Johnson, second by Verplank to approve the proclamation as amended. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, let's take the vote. Would you call the roll, please?
Johnson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The amendment proclamation is unanimously approved. Next item is resolution number two hundred six two two dash A, the fiscal year nineteen twenty year-end budget amendment. Who's going to brief us on this one? Peter or Kirk?
I'll just kick it off. Mr. Stanislavski is on the meeting as well, but each year when we, before the council adopts the new fiscal year budget, the city treasurer puts together a year-end budget amendment to kind of get everything in order. So I will let Mr. Stanislavski take over and he can answer any questions and kind of walk you through what the amendments are.
Okay, thanks. Peter?
Hello. So we'll start with the general fund. Basically, we're, I'll go through, we're going to increase the real property taxes by forty-two hundred dollars, personal property tax by a hundred. The penalties and interest on people paying the taxes late was actually they paid on time. We're going to decrease that revenue by seventy-four hundred. Increase the admin fee by thirty-eight, increase permits. That's basically building and zoning permits by sixty-five hundred. Grants received, increase that by a hundred and thirteen thousand and majority of that is the grant from the shopper stock that were put in last July. An increase in franchise fees by twenty thousand. We're going to decrease the Culver Street parking lot fees by three thousand, decrease the chain ferry fees by three thousand. Increase the gate fees and the ticket sales for Oval Beach by a hundred and thirty. Decrease the Oval Beach concession by ten thousand, decrease boat rent fees by twelve sixty-eight. Decrease the gazebo at Cawflyn Park by a thousand. And then increase police and ordinance fee fines by three hundred dollars, increase the interest earned by twenty thousand. Increase the street end and property fees by fifty-one forty-one. Decrease the boat slip fees by eighteen forty-three, eighteen hundred and forty-three dollars. Increase our election fees and use tax by five thousand. That's all the revenues of the general fund, either increasing or decreasing. And then we get to the different cost centers in the general fund. Increasing the legal fee, the attorney fees for the city council by ten thousand. Increase fringe benefits by fifteen hundred. When you look in the column to the right, it shows you what department it's for. Increase the contractual fees for twenty-five hundred, increase cell phones by three hundred. Increase salary and wages by thirteen thousand, increase the fringe benefits by twenty-three thousand five hundred. Increase office supplies by fifty bucks, increase the board review training by ten dollars. Increase fringe benefits by fifteen thousand. Increase the telephone by twenty-five, two hundred and fifty dollars, increase fringe benefits by a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Increase supplies by two thousand, tools by five hundred, contractual services thirty thousand. Which just was that thirty thousand is from the budget amendment or the action by the council a month ago for the flooding issues. Increase signs by fourteen hundred. Increase capital outlay for flooding by twenty-six thousand. Increase office supplies by ten, contractual services for the harbor by a thousand. Fringe benefits in the parks by sixty-three hundred, equipment rental for seventy-five hundred. Supplies with thirty-five hundred, printing and publishing seventy-five hours. Refuse and maintenance, ten thousand and increase the concession by five hundred. So that's basically balance back and forth. And I know somebody's probably going to ask some questions on the fringe benefits, the large amounts. These were amounts that I moved around in payroll, basically to make another, hopefully to make another large payment towards your unfunded liability on the pension or outstanding pensions. And then the bottom is the major street funds, basically it's increasing some revenue from the county road mileage and interest and an increase in fringe benefits there. That was the major street, the local streets are basically the same, increased county road mileage, a decrease in some penalties, interest on taxes. There's also an increase in the local road mileage and interest and then an increase in expenses of fringe benefits. The debt service, it's basically for the road bonds that will be paid off in twenty twenty-eight. It's a decrease or increase in some debt mileage for basically property taxes and a transfer of thirteen thousand dollars for the fund balance from the, to balance the debt service. Then we have the water and sewer fund, it's basically an increase in water fees and sewer taps by fifty-four hundred, then a thousand and then increase in interest by two thousand. And then an increase in some water sewer contractual services by eighty-four hundred dollars. The motor pool is an increase in revenues by forty-five thousand. And then there's an increase in insurance expenses and then just basically transfer some fund balance. I don't know if anybody has any particular questions out there on any of these.
I do.
Chris?
Yes. Could you go back up to the top about the concessions? Oval Beach fees, we're showing, is that an increase over, or is that what we feel the total will be?
No, that's an increase of what was originally budgeted, was a hundred and thirty thousand.
That we will receive?
Yes, yep. And that's basically the, the ticket sales and gate sales are tremendously going well for so far since Memorial Day. A lot better. The concession hasn't, but the, the gate sales and the season pass revenues are really, they're way up.
Oh, okay. That's what I needed to know what you based it on. Thank you very much.
Okay, does that bring it up to what it normally is, Pete?
Yeah, I say it's above normal, the gate sale, the, the day passes and the season passes are above last year.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Hallie?
Um, I have a request, actually it's probably for Kirk. It's regarding legal bills. And I know that this is something that we've discussed in the past, but I'd like to schedule a session with the attorney to update us on expenses and cases that are pending because I have been here for six months and that hasn't happened. So it's, I don't feel completely comfortable approving expenses when I need to be completely up to date and briefed on any pending litigation or outstanding cases. So I know we've talked about it in the past. I just would like to see it happen. Thanks.
Yeah, I would, I would too. I think a briefing along the lines of the cases that are pending would be helpful. I'm not sure whether we would need to do that in closed session because of the content, but that's something we'd have to.
Yep, I'll be happy to schedule that and if it's a pending case, we would definitely go into closed session for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions on the budget?
So, Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet.
Garnet, yes.
Yeah, hey, so Peter, just educate me on, since this is my first year going through this, this is a regular end of the year, just to balance out.
Yes, it's basically housekeeping to get everything, you know, happy for the auditors. Basically, so every line item, we can't have overspent or basically on the expense side. The revenues, they don't care, you know, you can, if you don't collect, but it's the expense side. They don't want you spending something that we weren't authorized to do. So every, if you go back over the last two years.
Okay, yep. Wanted to understand. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Garnet, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Chris?
Yeah, that reminded me, when does the auditor come and when will he get his final report? Because he'll go through and, and double-check all of this and then we get a report, kind of a rating, I guess. Is that correct?
That's correct. I wouldn't, we, I haven't even talked to the auditors. They probably usually don't show up until I start sending them all the file work about the first of August and then they arrange to come in-house sometime in early October.
But they'll be tracking all of this revenue to make sure.
Yes, yeah. They go, they come, they, basically they get, they see everything, they ask for about everything.
Thank you.
Cindy, do we have a motion on the floor? You're muted.
I'm sorry, I lost connectivity for just a minute, so I didn't hear a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Peterson, second to approve the budget. Jane?
Mr. Mayor, point of order, if they could state the motion, please.
Yes. I move to approve resolution number two zero zero six twenty-two dash A, amending the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget as presented.
I second.
Moved by Peterson, second by Verplank to approve the budget as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then would you please call the roll?
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So the year-end budget amendment is approved. Next item is resolution number two hundred six two two B, General Appropriations Act. Kirk or Pete?
Yep, this is the General Appropriations Act. This is actually the action that council would take to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. And what you would be approving is the estimated revenues of, with your operating mileage of eleven point three nine three eight mils, which would generate a two point four five six nine hundred, or two point four million in revenue. The sheet that you have is attached to that, which is actually the, you know, before, in the public, in the public hearing, you had the complete budget that was in detail. But this is the, for the Appropriations Act, this is the revenues in your, in your expenditure. So you're proven and by fund. If you have any questions, Peter and I can definitely try to answer any questions you have, but this, that, hopefully that document you have in your packet, you're ready to look it over. But that would be approving the actual budget for this fiscal year. Pete, do you have anything to add?
No, no, if somebody has a particular question.
Okay, before we have a discussion, is there a motion to approve the Appropriations Act?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet. Sure, Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet.
Garnet, it's kind of a tie, so Garn, you go ahead.
Okay, motion to approve resolution number 200622-B, and adopt the General Appropriations Act as presented.
Oh, okay, move by Louis, second by Leo, to approve the appropriation. Now, we have any discussion? Any discussion? All right, hearing none, clerk, would you take the roll, please?
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So the General Appropriations Act is unanimously approved. Next is resolution 20622-C, PA 152 compliance. Let me get this up here. Kirk, are you leading on this?
Yep, this is something that the council, the city of Sagittuck does annually. This is to make sure that we're in compliance with PA 152. Essentially, this has to do with the healthcare. The city council, and I'm not gonna read through the memo, because obviously you've been able to do that on your own. But in a nutshell, basically what we have is the city of Sagittuck uses its benefits to retain and recruit the employees. And I've listed out what the healthcare costs have been for the city since 2013. Last year, we had an expenditure for the employees of 84,409. This year, it's just up slightly at 84,462. But the reason we do this is if we don't, then we're not able to get the Act 51 money. So it's a requirement that the state puts before the city. And so we bring this to the council during the, after the budget's approved each year. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to go into further detail.
Okay, before we get into discussion, is there a motion? Jane? Jane? You're muted.
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 200622-C as presented.
Second, Peterson?
Move by Verplank, second by Peterson, to approve the PA 152 compliance. Discussion now, or questions? None? Then we'll call a question, clerk, please call the roll.
Verplank?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 20622-C is approved. The next is ordinance number 20622-1-154041. Chapter 154, Title 15 of the Code of the City of Sagittuck. Before we begin discussion, is there a motion?
Mayor?
Chris?
I'd like to give it a shot. I would like to, motion to approve ordinance number 200622-1, amending Title 15, Chapter 154, Sections 154005, 154024, 154.039, 154.040, and 154.041 of the Code of the City of Sagittuck. With, with, now how do, I need to make an amendment. As amended, to allow 154024, 154039, 154040, 154041 to have personal service establishments permitted by right. And to allow C1 City Center and C2, C1 City Center to have professional offices on second and third floor only, permitted by right. And C2 Water Street East, business professional offices permitted as a special land use.
Is there a second to that? Second, but second by Verplank. And Chris, I'm assuming you've got all that written down, so we're gonna restate this after you.
There are four sections, there's the C1 City Center, C2 Water Street East, C1 Water Street North, and C2 Water Street South. All of those would allow personal service establishments to be permitted by right. Then the C1 City Center, which is that red Butler Street, would allow business and professional offices on second and third floor only, and that would be permitted by right. The C2 Water Street East, which is the green that Mr. DeGraff talked about, it would allow business and professional offices permitted as a special land use. So we come back to planning. And then there would be no business professional offices on either Water Street North or Water Street South.
Okay, hearing, hearing none, we'll go ahead and call a question. Clerk, please call the roll.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Becken?
No.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
I already said that, okay, yes, okay, and Chester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The ordinance is approved. There is no consent agenda, so we'll move to public comments on any issue. Anyone in the audience wishing to make a comment, please call attention to yourself and limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone in the audience wish to make a comment? Dan?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I have a suggestion at the end of this, and I know sometimes it wasn't all that, all that welcome, but I'll try anyway. As we all know, social media platforms, Facebook and the like, offer significant communication advantages these days. But unfortunately, also some ugly downsides. In the latter regard, the recent behavior related to council or by certain council members on their social media sites has been at minimum a little reckless. Perhaps this is the state of affairs in national politics, but let's not adopt it for Sagittuck. Free speech, obviously, is one thing and very important. But when council members engage in online lobbying, with one-sided arguments and emotional posturing and the like, they not only diminish themselves, they damage the reputation of the entire city council. But in the absence of policy guidelines and standards, what can really be done to rein in these bad practices? Well, here's a starting point. The Michigan Municipal League offers a number of resources on this general subject. Most, however, focusing on government sites and government accounts. But I think it's a start, as I said. The council might want to consider a working group or some other way to explore these sorts of contributions from Michigan Municipal League and other sites as well. To begin developing a thoughtful online posting guideline, set of guidelines, for our elected officials. If it would help, I'd even volunteer my time to help moderate such a group. I did plenty of that in 30 years in advertising. Service on this council should bring with it a serious responsibility for honest, ethical, non-political behavior on social media. And that's my suggestion as a first step to getting to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Lauren Flanagan?
I think that the comments on social media were representing First Amendment freedom of speech rights. And in response to allegations of lying and misrepresentation. And I think they're in the basis of transparency. There certainly should be guidelines about what's appropriate, not only in social media, but on the council meetings and attacking one another. So, you know, again, I repeat, we're watching, we see, this stuff is being recorded. There are people who don't accept it. And our freedom of speech as a First Amendment right is paramount. And I think we need more on social media, we need more transparency. We need more people communicating to have more representative government in our community at this critical time in our nation's history and in our local area. Because these are life and death matters we're facing, from pandemic to business failure, to real challenges that people are facing and real opportunities we need to grow this community into the thriving community that could be, as opposed to where we're going to be in the next year, which I think is having severe revenue shortfalls. And we're gonna have big questions and big issues to deal with by not having enough revenues to cover the costs of the big problems like flooding. So again, freedom of speech, more transparency on social media. Guidelines are good, including not attacking fellow council members.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to communications. First being board and commission vacancies, and you can see that we have a number of them. Most of them caused by term expirations, and so we call that to your attention. Any questions or discussion about that, vacancies?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Garn. When, I had a person ask me when these terms would commence, do...
Cindy, can we?
Do we have an idea?
Mute.
Thank you. The historic district commission positions would commence August 1, and the rest of them would commence as soon as they are, the appointments are made.
Is there a period of time when the nominations are closed?
This was from June 17, so June 30.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
You know people that want to apply.
I have a question.
Chris?
Cindy, am I still on the HDC then, for July?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mark? Mark?
Yeah. Are these, this is quite a large number of openings. Obviously Cindy mentioned that majority of them are for end of terms. Are, are any, one, is any resignations involved here? Or is this a kind of a newer procedure where even those who are completed their term can still apply for the position?
Yes, they can still, they can still apply, but it was just to make it more transparent, to let everybody know that there are openings and anybody can apply. And I think that was something that the council did a policy on back in... Kirk, can you help me with the date?
Yes, it's March.
March.
Right.
Correct, and I just wanted to get that out, that the public is aware that existing members of these boards may reapply.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion about that one? The next one is the Attorney Memorandum Regarding the Doomgrass Request. Kirk, can you summarize that just quickly?
Well, this was, you know, the couple, I think it was the last meeting, we had a, I was expecting to have this memo, and we weren't able to get it in time. So the meeting was published and I just had pending on there. So since we didn't receive it at that meeting, I put it on this one here. It's sort of after the fact, to a certain degree, as I know council discussed this, and there were some questions from the association out there that was asking for the council to commit some more funds and do some beach patrols. And it didn't sound like that was something the council was interested in doing. So the one thing I think in this memo that the attorney was mentioning is that it's, the difficulty seemed to be in identifying where the high watermark is, and therefore trying to enforce that. That's what I got a big takeaway from it. So that's sort of the main issue. The property owners out there did ask the city to, that they would consider putting in some type of ordinance for regulating the takeoff of drones. And I did some research on that, and it might be worthwhile for the city council to consider actually having a policy for all the city parks with drones. Cause if, as you know, they're easily accessible in terms of purchasing these devices, and if not operated correctly, they can cause some safety issues, especially in a crowded park. I think the reason that the people out in the Doomgrass Association would like to limit the ability for people to launch drones at Oval Beaches, a lot of people are launching them, and then they're kind of flying over and getting to people's privacy, which I know could be somewhat annoying. So I think that's probably a worthwhile endeavor to kind of explore that. A lot of communities are starting to regulate that. You can't regulate drones in the air, but you can regulate where they take off from. And again, I think, I look at it, all the parks in the city, and some of these smaller parks, especially downtown, if someone was flying a drone and wasn't really skilled with it, when those crash into someone, you can really cause some harm. So I think there's some merit to the drone ordinance consideration.
Okay, can you bring that forward to our next workshop?
Well, I'm not gonna promise you the next workshop, because we gotta get some policies and processes in place to figure out how we're gonna add things to the workshops. But I will get it on one soon, how about that? I don't want to commit to something and then not be able to get it on. So I'll, I'll say, we'll address it soon.
Okay, I mean, this is clearly a bigger problem in the summer months than winter. So we're embarking on summer months. Boards, commissions, and committee reports, the only one I know of is the Harbor Authority. Mark, could you brief us on what happened at that meeting? Are you there?
You mean Cal Lake?
No, I mean the Harbor Authority.
Okay, it wouldn't be me, so, unless it's another Mark.
Yeah, he's not here anymore, I don't think. Clungle? Nope.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kirk. I talked with Mark today, and he gave me some information in case he wasn't able to stay on the meeting. So kind of the main topics they discussed were the request from the township to join the Harbor Authority. And I know the city council has had some conversations about this in the past as well. And the city of Douglas doesn't have a problem with them joining, but they think there should be some financial commitment to join. So I'll have to get some more information on that, but that's what was discussed regarding that topic. And then also, Mr. Clungle stated that Douglas is doing some weed treatment over there on their portion of the harbor. And he thought it was about 55 acres, and it was gonna be about $30,000. No, I'm sorry, $60,000 total for the treatment. And I don't, I can't verify that for certain, but I'm gonna get some information from the city manager from Douglas, and I'll report that back to council. But that was kind of the main things that Mr. Clungle wanted me to present to you.
Were there any other board commissions or committees? Yeah, Mark?
Yeah, Cal Lake did have their regular monthly meeting a week ago today. It was a rare meeting, and we actually had no actionable new business or old business items, other than approving our accounts payable. We got into a very detailed discussion about a lot of storm damage that the entire community wide suffered. Well, it's been ongoing for several weeks. And we had some significant damage to some of our equipment, but, and, but the staff was able to keep the water flowing. And so kudos to them. We, there is an issue that, or a topic that is under discussion at the board level that we'll be bringing to the communities regarding seasonal shut-offs. We're trying to firm up a policy which kind of keeps Cal Lake staff from taking the role as a personal plumber for, for people who have seasonal buildings. There's more to come on that. It's in its formative stages. Just wanted to give council an update that that's a topic that the authority boards going to be working on. So Barry, you got anything to add?
That's pretty good, Mark, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Jane, did you have something to report?
Yeah, the fire board met last week, and you approved the fire board budget on June 8th, so the fire board was able to go ahead because all of the communities had approved our budget. So we held a public hearing of which was not very well attended, and the fire board then approved the budget for 2021, so we're good to go. We had to do that before June 30th. As the season starts, call numbers are on the rise. We had six calls yesterday, which is quite a few on a Sunday. I think it's because there's so many people in town. Greg also participated in a county commission meeting where the county commissioners approved a resolution to ask the governor to declare Lake Shore Drive a disaster area. They sent the stuff, they needed to send the resolution and the pictures to the state, and they're awaiting a reply. And it was a pretty short meeting.
Thanks. Any other reports? Okay, we'll move to council comments. Garnet, will you go first?
Sure. I just wanted to thank the 26 folks that called into this meeting. It's always good to have folks listening in on all of our business. And I just wanted to say just a comment about our First Amendment rights, especially as it applies to social media. You know, that is our First Amendment right, and far be it from me to want or curtail what people are saying on social media, because then that would open the door to basically limit an individual's right to say, attend a protest in Lansing and bring back the COVID disease. So I'll just leave that right there. Thank everybody for attending.
You're good. Holly?
Thank you, Mayor. I was happy to see executive order 202129 extending public bodies' right to meet remotely. And also like Garnet, I want to thank those who have participated. As we have discussed, our attendance is up, and I think we're all happy about that. I want to extend a thank you to Kirk for recording and keeping our meetings on a public accessible YouTube link. I think that's been a very valuable tool for the public. Thank you.
Thanks. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think we're making progress here. There was a speaker tonight that on June 18th said, seriously, let's not fall in, under the rules of order and Roberts rules, where tonight they're espousing transparency. So I think we're making progress on that when people are thinking about the First Amendment rights of everybody's opportunity to speak. So thank you everybody for supporting our non-discrimination proclamation, and let's move forward.
Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to thank, and I'm sure council does too, Kirk and Peter for putting together our budget, going through the budget process. It's a, it's a lot of work, although there wasn't a lot of specific input from council at tonight's meeting. There were various opportunities for us through the process, through workshops to learn more about the budget and also to give our input on some items. We have a strong financial position because we have good financial people guiding the city down that sometime precarious road. So I just want to say thanks again for, to Kirk and, and Peter and the staff for, for a job well done.
Thanks, Mark. Well, so Jane?
Yes, I would also like to thank Kirk and, and Peter. They put a lot of time and effort into this budget, and they guide us well in our fiduciary responsibilities to the city. We have a good, strong general fund. We make it through a lot of tough times. We made it through 2007, and I'm sure we'll make it through this pandemic. So thank you very much for all the work you do on this.
Chris?
I love the Zoom meetings. I hope we get to continue those. We have great turnout, and it's just so easy to, to listen in and just enjoy it right off the bat. I want to thank the DPW because the downtown looks wonderful. They're keeping up with all of the huge amount of people, and I think the pop up idea, I think we should pat ourselves on the back for that, along with Elizabeth and Sogatuck Douglas together. That all work, all that work turned out to just be wonderful. That's all.
Indeed, and I would, I would echo that. Over the weekend, I had an opportunity to drive around again and, and see the town was packed. We have a lot of people coming into this community to visit us. Not very many of them are wearing masks, unfortunately, but I think all of our business community is really complying by, you know, insisting people wear masks indoors. They're doing the distancing extremely well. And so I think inside of that, we're doing our job. It's, it's the people who are obstinate about following rules and distancing and masking that put us at risk. We're, we're still sitting at three cases of coronavirus in our local area here, three cases. Now, we're seeing what's happening in California and other places where because of the people partying and lacking, complying with the rules, we could, we could easily get a spike. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned that there's discussion in the business community, or I wouldn't call dissension, but disagreement that while the pop up places for the restaurants are great, others who are dependent on retail sales are saying, well, you're taking away parking spaces. I think, I think we need to accommodate as best we can, all sides here, knowing that you're always going to offend half your audience if you do one thing and the other half you do another thing. But I'd, I'd ask each of you to kind of be eyes and ears and talk to our merchants here in town and, and, you know, kind of see if we can resolve any of their concerns along the way. So that's my two cents. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ken, Ken, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
You were going to kind of give us some input on what Kirk mentioned about the fireworks. You mentioned it earlier in the meeting.
Yes. Some individuals, business in the, well, Kirk, do you want to tell us what you know first, and then I'll, I'll piggyback on that.
Yeah, I was contacted by the owner of Coral Gables, Mr. Johnson, and he was looking into, he's reached out to the, he called me last week and asked me for the name of the company that does the fireworks display, and I gave him that information. He's reached out to him. He's wondering if he could raise the money and, and be able to hire this individual, if the council would be interested in approving such an event. And I said, he just called me back tonight, and I said, well, it's, it's not an action item on tonight's agenda, so you can't really have a vote, but I thought maybe we could at least have a discussion about it and get some input. You know, this is, there's a lot of the events, well, the Venetian Festival has been canceled. The Fourth of July art fair was canceled. I did reach out to Sadaba, and they are looking to move the music in the park event. They're going to do it in, I believe, August, they were going to do it. And move it to Coffin Park. And then also, I talked to Millpon Realty regarding their August event where they do a free moving in the park. So those events were previously approved by city council, and the events that have canceled have been at the, the event organizers canceled those events. All the events the city approves, we put a disclaimer on there that says that the city council can deny the event if there's a, it's a public safety issue. And the council, really, we haven't really had much discussions about what we want to do moving forward here the rest of the summer. If you hold the event, is that going to be a negative where you're encouraging people to, to congregate? So at any rate, it's just something to talk about, and I, and, you know, the fireworks thing, I know if you have fireworks, it doesn't mean everybody goes into one area. You know, people might go to Coffin Park, you might encourage a lot of people to come to town. It's a kind of tough decision, but anyway, that's what I know, and it's, we probably need to have some discussions relatively soon if somebody wants to do something.
Yeah, I, I got to draw, this is why I'm still on the board of Cowville Yacht Club, and which sponsors the Venetian Festival, of course, and we decided to not have any of the events other than the ding and poker run that are normally associated with the Venetian Festival. The, the vendor who's proposing to do these fireworks is Night Magic Dick Wilson, who we've dealt with for many years, and he's a very upstanding individual, very careful about public safety. He would obviously love to do it because he lost both the, the Lothrings fireworks and the Cowhole fireworks. But he knows that first of all, we need to have city approval, and he's running up against the deadline. He also has to get Coast Guard approvals and approvals from somebody else, and they usually take more than 30 days to, to get. So I advised him that I didn't think the Venetian weekend was going to be possible if it had to go through that process. He's flexible and is willing to do it later in August, which also might be a better time to do it, given the progression of the coronavirus. So I, you know, from a standpoint of Sogatuck as a tourist town, I think it would be a great thing to do. I think though we have to be very, very careful about how we move forward with it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I, and yeah, as much as I would, I know where Mike's coming from. I think we're still under the governor's executive order 2020-127, which issues a stay in at home order until July 16th and limits the size of groups that can be in one spot, and knowing how many folks would come out for a Fourth of July firework, given that everyone else has canceled theirs. We will have a huge crowd in town, and, you know, it, it might be better to wait and do a Fourth of July in August or Fourth of July in September, but I think we need to see, get the guidance from the governor's office as far as the executive order and the limitation on crowds.
I agree, Garnet. Obviously, if the, if the governor is not going to permit something like that, we're, we're not going to have it. You know, we could do Labor Day for that matter, so there's some options.
Mr. Mayor, I think what, again, I think what Mike was proposing was Venetian weekend, which is at the end of July.
It was.
So, because I think he realized that there's no way you're going to be able to get any kind of approvals for the Fourth of July, which would, you're right, if everyone's Fourth of July fireworks are canceled, we were to do them, we would probably have more problems than anything else.
Well, if I said before, that was an error. I know that he wants to do it on Venetian weekend, and there still isn't enough time to do it. I mean, you couldn't get a city council done by then, unless we have a special meeting or whatever. So. Okay, any other comments on that? All right, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll move Peterson.
Second, Lewis.
Second by Lewis to adjourn. Take the roll, please.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Kirk Plank?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Thanks to the public for sticking with us, and we look forward to seeing you at, at our next meeting. We adjourn.